All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Present.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Havens? Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will move into the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me briefly describe how we conduct business. Basically, the city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief description of the case. We ask the appellant to then step forward, state your name and address for the record, please. There's also a sign-in sheet, and explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the findings of facts. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then we will hear the staff recommendation. Then we'll open it to public comment, and then turn it over to the board to deliberate, make a decision, and move on to the next case. And I'll lead you through this whole process, so don't need to remember that. So will the city call the first case, please?
Case number 24-23. The appellant, Moshe Khan, representing Yeshivas Darke Torah owner, which is an amendment to the legal notice, is requesting the following from the board: A temporary use permit to allow two temporary modular classroom structures on the property during renovation of the main school building. The property is located on the north side of 12 Mile Road, at the northeast corner of 12 Mile Road and Murray Crescent Drive, Sidwell Parcels #2410-376-010 and 2410-376-011, zoned RE Single Family Residential and R4 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Hey there. If you could just step up to the microphone, and these microphones are a little testy, so you need to get right into the microphone, please.
Okay.
Perfect. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My personal address?
Either.
Moshe Khan, 21550-
A little closer.
My name is Moshe Khan.
Got it.
21550 West 12 Mile Road in Southfield.
Perfect, thank you. And can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes. We're asking for a temporary use of the property of 21410 12 Mile Road to put temporary modulators there. You know, our school is growing by leaps and bounds, and there is unfortunately not enough room for us to be able to address every student's need to the best of our capabilities. We take pride in really focusing on every single child as much as we could. We try to service each individual child to as high of a level as we possibly could. We have many people that come in to work with students, the children one-on-one, sometimes in groups, and that requires a lot of space. The classes are getting bigger. With bigger classes, there's obviously more issues, especially in our generation. You know, I don't know if we're more cognizant of the issues, but there's definitely much more that comes up, and there's a lot of extra help that children need, and we don't have the adequate space for that. We are working very much to find another property to be able to build another school building so we could really have adequate space for everything. But at this point, we wanted to know if we could have a temporary, if they could be given temporary permission to use the property that we could put up two modulators, and we feel that it would really, really alleviate a nice amount of space to at least carry us over for the next little bit until we find the right location that we could, you know, have enough space for everybody. Just to give you a little bit of an example of the space, sometimes my office or the principal's office are used for people coming in to service some children, some of them from, you know, Southfield, coming in, and it's- if we could give them their own space, if we could have space for everybody, we feel that the effect that we could have on each child, we'd be that much more effective and be able to get them to, you know, to get to the- where we want to try to get them in order to get them to, as they say, no child left behind. In order for them to be able to grow to the best of their capabilities, to the best of their potential. I'm sorry if you can't hear.
Can you turn it up a little bit?
I'm gonna turn it up, yes, yes. To the best of their potential, we feel that if we had space for each one, for each individual child who requires that space in order to be able to reach the best of his potential, then it would make that much of a difference in everyone's, each child's life. And that's really our goal. That's really what we're trying to accomplish. We're just asking for a temporary use until we could figure out, which we're actively working on, a much more permanent solution. And we want to know if you'd be able to grant us that temporary use so we could be able to service everyone to the way that we would all love to be able to service them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 24-23, the appellant, Moshe Khan, excuse me, representing Yeshivas Darke Torah owner, is requesting the following from the board: A temporary use permit to allow two temporary modular classroom structures on the property during renovation of the main school building. Property is located on the north side of 12 Mile Road, at the northeast corner of 12 Mile Road and Murray Crescent Drive, Sidwell Parcels 2410-376-010 and 2410-376-011, at 21550 and 21410 West 12 Mile Road, zoned RE Single Family Residential and R4 Single Family Residential. Property is currently developed with the Yeshivas Darke Torah School and a residential home owned by the school. Properties to the north are zoned RE Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Murray Crescent Drive. The properties to the south across 12 Mile Road are zoned R2 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Murray Crescent Drive, 12 Mile Road, San Carlos Street, and Carmel Drive. The properties to the east are zoned R4 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Pine Tree Drive. And the property to the west is zoned RM Multiple Family Low Rise and is developed with the Colony Park Apartments. The total site contains 7.54 acres of land with 570.88 feet of frontage on 12 Mile Road, a depth of 525 feet on Murray Crescent Drive, and a total depth of 741 feet. The applicant is proposing two modular temporary classrooms, 864 square feet each with steps, ramps, sidewalks, and landings to be located just east of the school and on a portion of the residential property. The exterior elevations reflect OSB panel, which is an engineered wood product. Initial conversations began with the school around July 25th, 2024, at which time the planning and building departments outlined the required information needed for review prior to proceeding to the Zoning Board of Appeals for temporary use approval. School representatives were made aware that plans would need to be in mostly approvable form by August 23rd, 2024, meaning staff would need to have a reasonable amount of time to review the drawings to proceed to the 9/3/24 meeting. Partial drawings were only submitted to the planning department on 8/22/24. Therefore, the case was postponed to the 9/17 meeting. Additional information, including a tree survey, was submitted on 9/6/24. Discrepancies between the tree survey provided and information shown on aerial photos prompted a planning inspection of the property, where it was found that tree and brush located within a designated woodlands area on both the east and north sides of the school building had been removed without prior approval. Further, because tree protection fencing was not installed, some of the remaining trees appear to have suffered damage due to heavy equipment traversing root zones and due to sub-quality unscreened filter deposited on the site covering root zones of existing trees. On September 11th, 2024, the planning department relayed city staff comments to school representatives outlining information, which is still outstanding, as well as citing potential health, safety, welfare, and fire access issues surrounding the location of the temporary trailers. As of September 12th, the information requested had not been received. And just one additional note I'd like to make as part of the findings is that another key item requested by staff was a detailed timeline of need. Planning staff was originally assumed that the trailers would be needed for a definitive period of time, and we did not receive that information, so at this time, we don't even know if temporary use is the proper avenue.
Okay. Do you agree with those facts?
I'm trying to follow the entire process. There was- there were some trees that were damaged. We were trying to do this as quick of a time as possible, which, you know, is always hard. We wanted, you know, as much as at the beginning of the year, as we could be able to get these things set up, we thought that would help a lot more. Obviously, you know, there's things that get in the way, and things take time, longer than you want. We were trying to do everything possible to expedite the process because we felt that as much towards the beginning of the year that we could have adequate space for everybody, then that much more would be helpful for the education of our students. So just pertaining to the fire access, that fire access is still there. There's still a road. The road's still there. It's still- I know someone had spoken already to the, I think he spoke to the fire chief. He said, "As long as we keep that area gravel thing, gravel road that was there originally," which is still there, it's the same as, basically the same as before, that fire part of it shouldn't be a problem. As to the temporary use, I hope it's gonna be very temporary. That's really, really our hope. We really, really need much larger facilities for the clientele, the amount of the clientele that we are servicing, and that really, really is our goal. As temporary as it possibly could be, that would be my, you know, my wish would be that it would be, that we wouldn't have to do this. I don't think it's ideal. Modulators are always a temporary, even for the education and everything, them being outside. There's obviously, for, as a school, there's just logistical problems. I hope it will be as temporary as possible. You know, I guess you have to be realistic. We're hoping, you know, that it should, that- if we should, you know, we should find something as soon as possible. And I don't want to say a timeline, but as short as possible. I guess if we'd be realistic, I mean, if we started doing something today, let's just imagine if we had some sort of building, it would probably take, you know, about a year to put together. So, but I guess, you know, two years, I know that that's some sort of number, so I think that would, hopefully, hopefully, if our wishes were granted, then we would- it would be, let's just say, two years, just to be on the safe side. But I would hope it would be before that, if we could, if our other plans, the things that we're working on, could be able to come to fruition. Was there anything that I missed?
No, I just need you to, do you agree with the facts, with your caveats?
I hope I remember them all, but-
They're on the record.
They're on the record. From what I remember, what Sarah said, I didn't see your name over there. Thank you for all the effort, and even though we were really, really pushing things, but we try very hard, and I thank you for being so easygoing about everything.
Okay, so is that a yes, you agree with the facts, or no, you do not?
I guess so, from what I remember, but I don't know if I remember everything that she said.
Okay, thank you.
Can you cheer? Can you go to Mike? Turn it up a little bit for me?
I just need you to speak right into the microphone for us, okay?
Actually tilt the mic up.
Tilt it up?
I mean, I want us to turn the mic up, because something's not right.
I just, you have to just get really close to the microphone, and he does it every once in a while, and it comes through the speakers. When you're not, it's hard to hear.
I'm eating it right now. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
It's a position maybe. Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay.
Will the staff read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to deny the temporary use request without prejudice based upon the following: Due to the information still outstanding to various city departments and due to the pending unresolved matter surrounding unauthorized tree and brush removal, we are unable to ascertain if the proposed temporary use will adversely affect the character of the area, will be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood, or will be in keeping with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. And due to the information still outstanding to various city departments, we are unable to determine if the proposed site improvements will provide adequate protection to abiding uses.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would just add, I had the survey, the person who's doing the survey, I had him yesterday. He's actually gonna do a survey of the whole property with all of the trees and everything. He already started yesterday, and he's gonna give us something on the entire property to give us a survey of everything that he already started. Obviously, we're not, you know, everything that pertains to building, we're not gonna be building anything without, obviously, with, you know, with all necessary permits that we need. It's just that if we can get the zoning, and we know that we have approval for that, then we can go to the next step of getting all the building requirements and all those permits in place. Before we have that, that, before we know that we're gonna be able to get the zoning for it, it's just very hard to be able to make sure, you know, to put our effort into that, to be able to work for that. But yes, we're not doing anything that would, that- to put these modulators together without all necessary building permits. It's just, we want to know that we have the zoning, that we could put our efforts into really trying to make this happen, and knowing that it's gonna, it's something that we're, you know, it's work that's gonna end up having something that's gonna come out that's possible. Meaning if we don't know that we can have the zoning for that, then we're just putting a lot of effort into something that's really not gonna come to fruition. It's just a lot of useless work, but if we can have that zoning, then obviously we will be in touch, and everything would obviously go through the building department, up to code, up to everything that we have to do, whatever surveys we have to do, which we're already working on. And yeah, that's-
Okay. All right. So we're gonna open public comment on this case. If you're here to speak on this case, now would be your opportunity to step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Stay right there for us. Ms. Libbit?
I have several questions. Do you have a professional who is helping you with your plans?
Yes, so the surveyor is a certified surveyor by the state of Michigan, and the person who we're getting the modulators from, he's done in many, many different districts all over the state. He comes very, very highly recommended from a bunch of different school districts, and he has an architect that he works with, and he, you know, he dots every eye and crosses everything.
So what I'm getting at is that the denial, the reason you're here seems to have been because of some things that were done in the past and trying to correct those things before you move ahead. And so I guess there is a professional who is needed, who knows what the codes are, what the rules are, and that is why I ask if you had a professional working with you to wade through all of these things. And one more thing, are these two units going to be for special needs children?
No, so we wanted to really keep that all in the building. Each one was gonna be a different classroom. We were gonna make an older division, which we thought would be better to separate them and have them make their own, you know, make them special and make their own thing, and then we would be able to have more room in the actual building. As, you know, especially if a kid has to go out of class, or has to be, for them to have to go outside, you know, we feel that would be much more difficult, it would just, the whole, the whole way that would work. We're just, so the idea is to have a class in each one, and then inside the building, we would figure out the space to be able to address everything else.
And then the first part of the question, do you have a professional who understands how to work through the outside issues with the trees and the plants and so forth?
So I guess I'm getting much better at it, but a professional who's dealing with everything, overseeing the entire project? No, there's someone who is overseeing the modulators, the specific modulators, but there's not, no professional that's overseeing the entire project. We're just trying to, we were just, like, trying to make it happen. That's all. You know, we're trying to do the best thing, what we thought was the best, and try to make it as fast as happened. Obviously, there were some mistakes made on the way, which we are currently addressing and trying to work through, and I guess we're, you know, we have to be more careful from now on. Obviously, not being in that profession, understanding all these things. But yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to fix all those problems and, and from now, you know, from now on, working with the building department, making sure that we got everything correct.
Sometimes it's worth the time and the money to have someone who can oversee all of it. That's all I'm trying to hear of your doing. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
Sounds like the city was willing to work with you if, had there not been any site preparation prior to it. It seems like that issue you'll be taking care of. How are you? What was your plan? Were you planning on having these modular structures put in for this school year right now that we just started?
So obviously, it wasn't gonna be able to be in the beginning because we had, you know, started too late with finding the right modulators that were gonna work for us. Things just took longer than we had hoped. I was hoping that towards the beginning of the year, that we were gonna be able to do it. If we had had everything in, you know, right order, which we didn't, what was it, two or three weeks ago, when there was that first, we were hoping that maybe after the holiday of Sukkot, that we could maybe potentially, if we had everything in order, be able to start after the, you know, that break that they had, we'd be able to start. Right now, I don't know if that's gonna be possible, but-
Is it detrimental if you didn't have these structures up when you want them up? Or could they wait till next summer? The reason why I ask is because-
I would say they probably should have, you know, they, this is my, I'm starting my fourth year in the school. They really should have probably been there the first year I was there. Space is a real issue, a real issue.
The reason why I ask is because when you're dealing with tree issues, you know, yeah, you're sending out a tree surveyor and taking care of that part, but then what the planning department wants you to do going forward, what type of tree replacements, whatever's gonna have to be done, it might not be resolved for some time, even though you want to get it resolved. You know, we're gonna be going into the fall and winter, and, you know, you know how that goes in Michigan. So the reason I'm asking is if it's detrimental, then, you know, that's a different story. I feel like you're probably going to work this stuff out with the planning department regarding the tree.
I wanna try to do it as fast as possible.
You probably, your inexperience put you in this position.
Right.
You know, you were trying to pave the way, so to speak, to get the structures put in. I get that. So you'll probably, you have no choice, but you're gonna work it out with the planning department. So if you actually need these structures sooner than the later, then although the city is recommending to deny it without prejudice, I'm saying is that he's gonna be going, these, Yeshiva's gonna be going through the procedure of all the proper channels of building permitting and all that stuff. Why would we prevent them from having these modular structures on this property in the interim? When we're in the middle, you know, we're starting the beginning of the school year, and it could actually be a detriment to the school, being in cramped quarters for 90% of the rest of the school year. So I don't have a problem with putting these up now and them working it out simultaneously. I don't think it's necessary to deny it with our prejudice for the very fact that he'll come back here in four months from now, or whatever, and we'll be talking, we'll have the same, you know, okay, yeah, you can have your thing now. So, and what was lost? Four months of the school year. That's how I look at it.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say, if you ask anybody, like, what's the one thing, anyone in the school, they would say, "There's just not enough space. There's just not enough space. You just need more space."
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, I may agree with Mr. Rogers on some level. I think it's important that he resolved the issues with the city, but I don't think any of the issues that I've heard from the city are things that we would consider when we would, whether granting or denying the temporary use permit. We've granted the temporary use for various other reasons. And I know he's gonna need the permits, and just because we granted the waiver, he would not have those permits. He would need to work, resolve all those issues with the city to get his permit. So I don't want to have this process delay him as he needs it. I know his inexperience, I assume from the fundraising appeals that I've seen, school is also doing this without professionals because they're trying to save money. You know, maybe that was the wrong way to go. But I would grant the waiver, knowing that he needs to resolve the issues with the city
With the caveat.
to get his permits, and just to make sure he doesn't spend more time and money having to come back.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
I too encourage the school. School is always good for our community. I have one question. Would you be willing to do? It says, "Fire access issues surrounding the location of a temporary trailer." Would you make sure that we have fire access to have, because that's a real issue?
Yes, sure, and especially-
So you'll work that out with the building department? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And the fire chief already told us that that's, you know, he reiterated that also, but obviously-
So, no, listen, we agree that you're gonna work it out so we have fire access, right? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Once the temporary units are removed, are you going to also assure that the site looks applicable to the community?
Yes, 100%. And actually, we like the fact that there's, you know, some sort of buffer. It's nice that you have-
The answer is yes, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Okay.
I also encourage you to do the right thing for our community, as well as I also are favorable for your temporary schooling.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit, did you have any other questions? I see you writing over there.
I, I'm getting at what the last question was. When the temporary buildings are removed, the area will be open to the community? Was that your question?
No, the temporary, it's temporary, so sooner or later, I think he's gonna build an addition to the existing facility, right?
It's not gonna, it's not, it's not gonna be attached, but it will be next to the-
Yeah, that's what I said. Okay, so the temporary, the temporary units you have right now will be moved after you build that, those units, build those, that facility, right?
Eventually, when we hope, yes. The plan is to keep them there temporary, and you just wanted to make sure that after they're taken down, that it looks presentable, it doesn't look like an eyesore, and the answer would be yes. We would like it to be presentable, meaning pleasing to the eye, to the neighbors, to the people that drive by, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, for a variety of reasons, cramped quarters in a school is dangerous for a different level of, you know, whether it's safety or health or whatever, so. And I think where the location is on these, of this property, I don't think is detrimental to the community. So I'm, you know, inclined to support as well.
Could I, yes, I'm sorry, Sarah? If I could, just to the board, I just wanted to just make absolutely sure, you know, in the recommendation, we have very specific criteria set forth in the ordinance about, you know, the effects on surrounding properties, and just so the board is aware, we do not have an approved location for these trailers at this time. They've proposed locations. We're still reviewing them. You know, we don't have a specific location. The location may change. So that's, you know, it's, that's kind of concerning to us. And then, you know, as I stated, you know, we had asked for, you know, a detailed timeline because honestly, we're not even sure that temporary use is the right mechanism. You know, if they're looking at something, having these for a longer time than two years, then site plan approval would probably be the better mechanism to go through and legally advertise and things of that nature. This is, you know, and just basically-
I think our thought is that we can grant the waiver, requiring them to still continue to go through these processes that are required with the planning department, whether it's a tree survey, whether it's site plan, whether it's permitting, whatever it is that is required. We wouldn't reduce any of those requirements. They still have to take those steps. You still have to get all that authority- You still have to get all that authority before you can put them in.
And at, and at whatever location the city eventually approves and planning approves, they would have the, the temporary use zoning waiver, um, at any location on their property.
Approved, any approved location?
I'm saying any.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, just, this step would not be a, a barrier to their, to their, to their process.
It's not like, it's not like we tell the MRI, uh, where to, where to put their MRI.
Unit, right.
I think we actually made some requirements that they didn't, that they didn't fill.
Through the chair to the board.
Oh, Mr. Jenkins?
If I make a point?
Go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
I got one more question. Do I, I, I missed, did I understand that your, the temporary units will only be there for about a year because you should have your permits? The permanent addition be done within the, by the year's time? Is that your target?
That's not what he said.
Um, I, I don't know, I, 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 I don't want to say a definitive time because.
I didn't hear what you just said.
I wouldn't want to say a definitive time. Cause I, I, you know, we are actively working on other things, so, you know, um, I'm, I'm hoping those, I don't think that this is the, the ideal, this is not our goal. Our goal is not to be in temporary modulators. So as temporary as it could be, that would be our wish.
It's year to year, isn't it?
Maybe I didn't hear you. Your, your temporary units are targeted to stay there for how long?
He doesn't have a timeline.
Well, I don't.
I would hope, I would hope max two years.
You would hope what?
I would hope max two years.
Okay, well, at least you got, it, it can't be just forever, that's what I'm saying.
Correct, yeah. The temporary use permit expires in two years.
So for the record, it's two years, okay.
If I might, through, to the board, temporary use can only be one year at a time. So temporary.
They have to reapply.
Yes, and they would have to reapply for a second maximum of two years.
Maximum of two years, okay. Brianna?
So I was going to state what Sarah just stated, that if they are approved tonight, it's going to be one year max.
Granted, a one year from today.
Today, whether or not they complete all their submittal requirements. And then I also wanted to point out, I couldn't find the article in our, our procedures, but the decision is only good for, I want to say 18 months. And if there's no activity on this at all, the variance is voided. He'd have to start over from the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
I got one more question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not trying to take. How, how are you going to address utilities for your, for your units?
Utilities?
Units.
Two units? So that, that, I mean, after we know that we have the, the zoning for it, and we're going to be approved, then we'll be in touch with the building department, exactly what would be the requirements, what do we need, how do we go about it, what would be the best way, um, et cetera.
It's not our jurisdiction.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Um, he just said that they're, they don't, that's not planned out yet. They'll work with the building department to determine.
Okay, that's part of.
But right now, we're all we're going for.
So that's part of your procedures, to work with the planning department, make sure the utilities are hooked up properly. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, do you want to make an attempted a motion?
You want me to make?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. In regards to ZBA case number 24 dash 23, the appellant, Moshe Khan, representing Yeshiva Sderke Torah owner, is requesting the following from the board. Please note the change in appellant from the legal notice. A temporary use permit to allow two temporary modular classroom structures on the property during renovation of the main school building. The property is located on the north side of 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel, 2410-376-010 and 2410-376-011 at 21550 and 21410 West 12 Mile Road. Zoned RE Single Family Residential and R4 Single Family Residential. I make a motion to approve the.
One year.
The one-year temporary use permit for two temporary modular classroom structures on the property during renovation of the main school building. The owner will have to reapply after the conclusion of one year and will have two years maximum on the temporary usage permit.
Do you want any conditions?
The conditions would be that you, the owner has to work in stride with the, both the building department in regards to permitting and the planning department in regards to ordinance and zoning clarifications, especially with the tree ordinances and things like that, in their entirety and to completion. And, uh, that's about it.
Okay, okay. Any second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so you have a lot of work to do.
I do.
Possibly hiring a professional to make sure you get through all the steps with the building department.
Yes.
In order to put in the trailers, take down any more trees, do any more activity.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, you're on the clock. Two years will run fast, so, all right?
I know.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night. Um, will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 24 dash 27. The appellant, Noah Berman, consultant representing Gold Dollar Real Estate Investments owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A front yard setback variance of 12.44 feet for the construction of a patio enclosure fence. 50 feet required, 37.56 feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Nine Mile Road between Hunter's Lane and Plum Hollow Street. Sidwell Parcel number 2428-401-004, located at 23100 Orleans Place. Zoned RM, multiple family, low rise. This appeal is to section 5.37 dash 1, Article 4, and section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Nope, closer.
Closer?
Try again.
How about now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I am representing Gold Dollar Realty, um, for this project.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
My name's Noah Berman. I'm with PEA Group, Landscapes Architect. Our office is at 45 West Grand River Avenue, Suite 501 Detroit, Michigan.
Thank you. And please explain to the board what you're asking for and why.
So we are asking for a variance to the ordinance, uh, for the fence, for a fence permit to allow for an existing, uh, fence that has been constructed to remain in place. So a little bit of the backstory. Gold Dollar Real Estate purchased the property. The current management team has been working on making improvements on the property. They hired a contractor to repair some existing fences that are internal to the property. In doing so, um, the planning building department, uh, indicated that they were not permitted in the past and that the work had done should cease until everything is made right. So Gold Dollar contacted us and the contractor hired us to produce permit drawings for them during that process. And all this has already been completed, by the way. So during the process, then, to make this all right, it was discovered the front, uh, property along Nine Mile, that existing fence sits within the front right of way. And so we're here tonight asking for a variance for that, to leave it in place so that the residents can still have that privacy of the patio that they've already, they've had.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 24 dash 27, the appellant, Noah Berman, consultant representing Gold Dollar Real Estate Investments owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. Front yard setback variance of 12.44 feet for the construction of a patio enclosure fence, 50 feet required, 37.56 feet proposed. Property is located on the north side of Nine Mile Road between Hunter's Lane and Plum Hollow Street. Sidwell Parcel 2428-401-004, located at 23100 Orleans Place. Zoned RM, multiple family, low rise. Property is currently developed with Sutton Place Apartments. Property to the north is zoned RE Single Family Residential and is developed with Southfield Public Schools, John W. English Administrative Center, and parking lot for school transportation storage. Property to the south across Nine Mile Road is zoned R2 Single Family Residential and is developed with the Plum Hollow Golf Club. Properties to the east are zoned RE Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Brookside Drive and Plum Hollow Street. And the property to the west is zoned RE Single Family Residential and is undeveloped property owned by the city of Southfield, abutting the Evans Creek branch of the Rouge River. Site contains 51.39 total acres of land with 695.25 feet of frontage and a depth of approximately 2,165 feet. In November of 2023, Southfield Code Enforcement Department noted new patio fencing installed on the site for several units and confirmed with the planning department that fence permits had not been submitted or issued for the property. A fence permit was submitted to the planning department on June 27th, 2024, reflecting wood privacy fencing patio enclosures adjacent to nine buildings within the Sutton Place apartment development. Eight of the nine fence segments indicated meet zoning ordinance requirements. However, the subject fence segment adjacent to 23100 Orleans Place is located within the required front yard setback, which is not permitted under the current fence provisions, regulations within the zoning ordinance. Fence regulations were adopted within the zoning, zoning ordinance in December of 2012. Any fencing installed prior to adoption of the fence regulations would be considered legal nonconforming. As part of the review of the submitted fence permit, submittal, planning staff discovered historic street view images of the property indicating that fencing had been in place since at least 2007, which would have made it legal nonconforming. However, in October 23, street view of the property shows that this section of fencing had been fully removed, most likely for maintenance purposes, and reflected what appeared to be newly installed posts. Removal of legal nonconforming fencing, fencing, even for maintenance purposes nullifies its legal nonconforming status thereafter, requiring compliance with current ordinance standards. There's also an existing legal nonconforming ornamental fence with brick piers and wall section that runs along the front of the property. Based on historic aerial photographs, it appears that the fencing was installed somewhere between 1963 and 1974, most likely in 1971, when the complex was constructed. There are several mature evergreen and deciduous trees that exist on the site, situated on both the north and south sides of the existing ornamental fence and wall that runs along Nine Mile Road.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do you agree with those facts?
They sound correct?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else you'd like, any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
Just one quick clarification. The letter we got from the planning department originally said 75 feet. So I just wanted to make sure it's 50. I'm good with 50, it's a less of a variance, but.
Uh, if I might, through the chair, I believe, yeah, it is 50 feet front yard for.
Okay.
For, yeah.
Thank you.
To the appellant.
Okay, great. So, uh, will the city read the staff recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variance request with the following condition. The appellant must continue to work with the planning department to finalize issuance of the submitted fence permit for the property. And, uh, this recommendation is based upon the following, variance request will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the fencing has existed here until at least, or since, since at least 27, 2007. There's an additional legal nonconforming wall and fence within the front yard setback in front of the patio fence proposed. There's a buffer of mature trees separating the subject fence panel from Nine Mile Road. And the property directly across the street from the fencing section is a 156 acre golf course. If the fencing had not been removed for replacement, it would be considered legal nonconforming and could remain indefinitely without the need for variance. And the proposed variances requested are in, uh, keeping in spirit, with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, so we'll open public comment and close it, saying none, and turn it over to the board. Uh, Mr. Jenkins?
I approve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, I have a question, just so I understand, because this would be legal nonconforming except for the fact that, uh, there's some Google Street View image of October 20, 2023 in which the fence may have been removed?
If, if I might, through the chair to Mr. Friedman, yes. They had removed the whole entire fence portion to, to replace it, so that's.
Sir, how much did you pay? Uh, how much did this, the, the application for this variance and the time that it took cost you?
For the, the client so far?
Yeah.
To do this, and this includes all the permitting and stuff, we're at $8,000.
I, I just want to say, everybody involved in this for the city should be ashamed of themselves. This is a legal nonconforming fence, except for a Google Street View image. I approve of this, I just can't believe they've made you come here.
We're just following the rules.
That's, that's my public comment.
Thank you.
I approve.
Mr. Rogers?
I don't have an issue with this.
Thank you, Ms. Lippett?
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, um, Ms. Lippett, will you make a motion for us then, please?
Regarding findings of fact, case number 2427, the appellant, Noah Brimlin, consultant representing Gold Dollar Real Estate Investment Owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A front yard setback variance of 12.44 feet for the construction of a patio enclosure fence, 50 feet required, 37.56 feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Nine Mile Road between Hunter's Lane and Plum Hollow Street. Sidwell Parcel 2428-401-004, located at 23100 Orleans Place. Zoned RM, multiple family, low rise. I move that the appellant be approved, the variance requested with the following condition. They must continue to work with the planning department to finalize issuance of the submitted fence permit for the property. The variance request will have men- because the variance request will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the fence has existed here until at least 2007. If the fencing had not been removed from replacement, it would be considered legal conforming and could remain indefinitely without the need for variance. And the proposed variances request are in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted.
Thank you for your time.
Just please continue to work with the department on your permit. Thank you.
Submit it tomorrow.
Okay, um, this will close our public hearing. Uh, we have minutes from August 20th. Does anybody have any changes? Otherwise, I'll enotation, a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th.
Still moved.
Can I have a second? Thank you, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, looks like we need to cancel the meeting for October 1st. Can I have a motion to cancel that meeting, please?
Still moved.
Thank you, thank you, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay, that meeting is canceled. Looks like next meeting is October 22nd.